I'd like to call a meeting order for April 20th, 2022. Start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Warrant bills are all signed?
Signed.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda?
Second.
Favor? Okay, minutes of the last meeting?
See here, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of April 13th.
Second.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update?
All right, just a few items. First in your packet, you have the water results that were performed on the well that was taken from out front. You can see that there's essentially just three items that first don't make, don't reach EPA standard. They are the chloride, the iron, and the magnesium. I sent this over to one of our water companies to find out what kind of concerns they had, you know, before we even talk about how we fix it. Do you have any concerns with this? And there are concerns with the conduct as well. He's worried about people with different types of heart medication taking this. It is not recommended that it be, that you drink it. So we're actually going to post these results.
Which chemicals is that?
The, um...
Oh, okay.
He said that was, that was extremely high. He said that there are, there are concerns with this test. So we're actually going to post this on all the outside spigots, so that people are at least aware. Posted anywhere there's water. And really need to figure out what, you know, what your next step is going to be. And he did, he talked about, David, you were there when I spoke to him. He talked about corroding as well. He asked if we had a lot of corroding heights based on some of these numbers. But essentially, so now that we got the results, we've sent it off to a couple of different companies. We're getting bids back. You have a very thick packet to take home with you to read over regarding one of the company's recommendations. That's just the first one that came in, so we're not going to do anything with it tonight. Just read over it, but more FYI for the reports, we'll get it posted. And as soon as another one comes in, we'll start comparing, you know, two or three together.
When we talked to, was Nelson, right, that we were talking to?
Nelson is who did the actual water test. I was going to leave the company unnamed in case they bid on it.
Okay, yeah, because what I, what I, I'm hoping that anybody that sends a bid in is going to also give us a, an idea on a, what's it going to cost for maintenance of it?
Ongoing maintenance, yep.
Ongoing maintenance, because this is something that you have to maintain every three to four months. You may have to, depending on the difference, on the, you know, the levels and the IOs and all that, because they have to change all this stuff out. It's a corrode. It's, uh, it's kind of like those magnesium bags they put beside a propane tank. You know, you put them there, that's where the corrosion goes to. It's the same idea here. They're going to change those things out. So I ask, I'd like to make sure that they send a maintenance plan and also...
So these, these proposals will be on installing a water system?
Yeah, it's going to be, we didn't give them a specific. We're basically saying, here's our water results. What do you recommend?
Treatment, a treatment process?
A treatment plan of some sort, yep.
I know this well is not good. Is the well right out front here?
Yes, yep.
And the belief was it was contaminated by?
Road salt.
Road salts and so on?
But it's interesting that the, um, sodium doesn't come back, well, sodium is starred and it's at, what, 460? It doesn't have an EPA standard, which surprises me, but...
That does surprise me a little bit, but...
So it says, "Test marked with an asterisk indicates perimeter not accredited by the state domain."
Have other people in the area had problem with their water?
We'd have to contact them directly to find out. Not that I'm aware of, no one's...
As far as I know, I haven't heard anybody, there hasn't been any complaints up here at all about the, the well water due to salt. At least to the town hall.
Right, but even in chloride, I mean, that's extremely high for a salt issue.
Yeah.
I don't know how those would tie together. He recommended too, the particular gentleman that we talked to was retesting it in another three months as well, just to compare and make sure you didn't happen to get a bad test. I mean, we, you know, we took the nozzle off the faucet.
I was wondering if the churches had problems.
Yeah, we can ask. I can certainly reach out.
They may not have had it tested, and given this, they may want to have that tested, just to find out if they have issues. And if they don't, that may suggest something to us about, is there, are there options to putting in a system which I don't think it would cost us to dig a well, would it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. But while, because the problem is like this well out here, you got drilling of the well, the insulation, tearing up the parking lot, hooking the water lines up and everything else. And, and then you have that, you know, the 50/50 chance that it could be contaminated.
It could be contaminated again.
Okay.
So...
I'll reach out to the church and some of their neighbors.
Let's just find out if they're having similar problems.
Right, okay.
Last week you asked about the legal fees with the increase of Burke and Clegg. From Burke and Clegg last, currently we paid him $2,436. Last year we paid him $1,806. In 2020, we paid them $4668. And in 2019, we paid them $4830.
My, the reason I ask is, I didn't have an issue with the rate per se. It was going from 150 to 175.
It actually went from 140 to 175.
It was more the rate of increase. That's probably like a 20% increase, but how long did it been since it had a rate increase?
Well, so according to the treasurer, I can't say for sure without heavy digging, and the last time the rates went increased. But as far as 2018, which would be four years, it was 140. So it hasn't changed in four years.
And given that it's such a small amount, the rate of increase really wouldn't, you know, really create any significant new expense. So I'm fine with that, so thank you for digging that information.
We've had a couple of instances that might have been more, but if we don't, if we got it back in a court case, it's not included in that number if someone paid it.
Okay, all right.
I'm just going to let you know that Deputy Sean Sandborn has officially started in Acton Shapley. And I think I told you that last week. We're going to try to get him at next, next week's meeting. As soon as I can confirm that, we'll get something posted and try to do maybe a little meet and greet. For the residents and say hello if they want.
That's a great idea. It's nice.
Okay, Tom? You probably saw, it happened pretty quickly and they handled it very quickly, but just in case everybody's wondering, we did have a contractor inadvertently back up and hit the telephone pole about quarter of four today. When he hit the telephone pole, it removed the wires from the house directly across the street. CMP fire department, everybody was, was very quick and it came and got handled and hooked back up. Turned out to be just some phone wires, so it didn't affect the property owner too much, but it seems to be resolved.
That pole's been run into a zillion times.
Huh?
I said, "That pole's been run into a zillion times."
We're going to talk about the rec director in an executive session, but before, before I, that I knew we were going to talk about that, we want to have some conversations, but this may be after the director, when Tom and I update you on, on how that went today. But our rec baseball numbers are really down, very low. And currently, we are struggling to fill teams from grade three up. So if we don't find somebody that can recruit and really do some, you know, some outreach, there may not be baseball. We also want to put some pleas out to the parents and maybe more social media and more with the school to see if we can get more registrations.
Is it soccer as well?
And extend it. Yep, soccer's on the coming along.
Is that a spring or fall?
Fall.
Fall?
Yep. So we, soccer is, has huge numbers. Basketball had great numbers.
That's what I heard. Basketball had a very large number.
I mean, baseball, it's, it's summer. It is, but it's still early and some people may not be thinking summer. So we can extend the signups and, but, you know, we got to have baseball, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, all right, that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay. Department head, committee chair, updates?
You got the hint?
Yeah, I have a hint. Adam, all we listen to. This week, we went down, giving a week, went down the canal, swept off the bridge, blew off the bridge. I still want to wash down the old bridge underneath it. It's the last thing I got to do. I just, and we recreated the turnaround on the other side of Pitch Hit. It got it backed, so the water was running back into the woods where it should be. And get that whole neighborhood swept up.
So the whole, everything on the sides of the bridge, everything's flowing and going?
Still got to do a little more work after seeing the rain we had the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Went down that retention pond that's in there. It's pretty full. It should be dug back out. But even with all that rain, it still wasn't spilling into the canal.
Oh, nice.
I'd like to get down there and just re-clean it up a little bit more.
That is not a new retention pond, is it?
No.
No, it looked like it had been there for some time. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I believe the people down on Robinson Road put that in. We never did, so...
Yeah, I got a little trough going in where it comes off our road and goes into that retention. I originally had this whole stone set up so it would all sway all into there, but we plowed it, dug it all up and filled it all in, so. Just hand dug it the other day, just quickly to, because we knew the rain was coming.
And the bales of hay and the?
All that's cleaned up and put away and...
Great, nice.
You know, took care of all that stuff.
Excellent.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more?
I don't see any. Okay, we're going to go to old business, rec director.
So we're going to review our findings in an executive session under personnel?
I thought we were supposed to go into executive session for that.
We're going to. It's down under new business.
Okay, okay, yeah. I'm kind of confused why that...
Oh, yeah, no, that was my update, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to discuss it later, sorry, under B.
Okay.
Same is true with your superintendent.
B.
B, same thing.
So...
Just tabling those.
Yeah. So why don't we go down to C, audit bids?
Okay, so I have emailed you all of the documents, but essentially, these aren't being opened publicly because as you remember, the board made a slight change, asked me to reach out to all the companies. And emails were allowed, so we have them all printed off and, and put together. So essentially, you received four bids. You received two bids for engagement one and you received two bids for engagement two. Engagement one, if you had the time to look through them, they are completely different in what they offer. One of the companies offers everything from doing your regular payroll and accounts payable, all the way down to the budget process, bank reconciliations, pretty much the entire big portion of the treasurer's position. I believe that one was about $75,000. The other engagement one seemed to be more what Tom originally disclosed and kind of described. So that one's in there for you. And then the actual audit, you received two. You had the RHR Smith and you also had the, a new company called Main Municipal. Not to be tied with Main Municipal Association that we pay dues to whatsoever. There's no connection, just so you know. They both put bids in. At this point, depending on the direction of the board, we have generally in the past allowed the treasurer to review these, see if she has a recommendation. And depending on what direction you're going in, look for references, especially if you're interested in maybe going with a new audit company, you know, engagement B, we definitely want to reach out to some municipalities that use them and see what, what we have. I mean, we know our history with RHR Smith, so I'm not sure that we need to spend time on that. But the other company, to consider them, we should certainly talk to some towns and then figure out what you want to do with the engagement one piece.
Let me, let me start in with this. Engagement one was, was really put together at, at my suggestion. I was concerned about some of the audit procedures and whether or not they were comprehensive enough to make sure that we were getting a full audit and review. In addition, at that time, I think we only had one firm respond to the audit. So at that time, it looked like our only option may be R H Smith. So I was thinking that it would be appropriate to have somebody come in and provide us a proposal on really a more expanding, expanded role that would help to give, quite frankly, me and, and the board and the townspeople some comfort that we had the right kinds of checks and balances in place over the town's finances in total. There's one firm that came in, it's a relatively reasonable price and a scaled back set of services from what I had originally thought. And there's another one that is much more substantial with a much more expanded set of services. But now we also have two audit bids. For the, the issuing of an opinion on the audited financial preparation and issuing an opinion on the audited financial statements. So I think that gives us some options there that previously were not on the table. I would recommend that we go forward and I'd like, I would like to interview both firms. I'm not sure if the board, if the entire board would like to do that. I think it would be great to get the treasurer to take a look at the proposals and get her thoughts on it. But it's an important, it's an important function and for me personally, I would like to interview the, the firms. I think we ought to get references at a minimum on the firm that we're not familiar with. Main Municipal Audit Services or something to that take. And I would suggest that we hold off on engagement one at this time and, and not take any action on that. Let's see how the interviews and the references work out and what our selection might be for the two firms that are bidding on the audit. I think the other issue is the timing is not great on this. If we're going to go forward with this, we're going to need to put an article forward to pay for either of those.
Pay for what now?
Hmm?
What, what are you talking about?
Engagement one.
Okay.
If we were to do that.
Engagement two, I think we have covered.
For either one.
It's already covered. I think we have $20,000 in the budget.
You'd have to increase it, that's correct.
So I think that's going to cover engagement two all right. Engagement one, you know, we've got one that's very expensive and I think there are aspects of that that I find attractive, but I can, I can understand that that price tag, we better have really, you know, thoroughly investigated that. I don't think this, I, if we can, if we can make a selection that we're comfortable with for engagement two, I would suggest we hold off on one for the time being and consider that over the course of the coming year.
So... So I got three proposals here.
These are the first ones, which...
This is the one that does everything.
Right, and we don't, I, I am not ready to go forward with this. I think we need to do...
We've got a proposal here to completely...
So you have four, so...
We've got four proposals and, and...
Two for...
I'm not, I'm not an audit guy. I'm not an accountant, so I'm trying to sort through this and try to figure this all out.
So put the two engagement ones aside, essentially. You're looking at the R H R Smith.
Who is who we have.
Main Municipal Audit, which is the one that I was just reviewing.
And this has nothing to do with Main Municipal, you said?
So this is just an, an actual audit, like we've done all the years.
These are the only two that we've gotten in.
These are the only two that we've gotten in, and I have about 20 emails of rejection if you'd like to see them.
Without having the first one.
I personally called many of those firms.
Yeah, I know, and I called every one of them.
Trying to get them to submit, I just want the public to understand that we really beat the bushes on this.
And we have each year.
Trying to get audit firms to submit a proposal, and it was like pulling teeth. They just...
Thank you.
It's not economical.
Every year we say that.
They can't hire staff. They were very blunt about it. Most of them are pulling out of this business altogether.
Especially municipal.
It's the strangest thing I've ever seen, but that's the environment. And so I talked to the principals of all these firms and they were very straight about it, so...
And we, and each year, I mean, we not, might not have done as much due diligence as you did this year, and I appreciate you taking that extra step with us, but we have also reached out. And I mean, for $20,000, $14,000 to $20,000, they're getting out of municipal work.
Yeah.
You know, they have to have these extra certifications. They're just not worth it.
The firm that's doing it, I think, is making it up on volume. That's what, they, they just got a huge amount of towns that they're doing.
But at the end of the day, we could take these two proposals, put them aside.
Yep.
That'll be a discussion for another day.
Yeah.
The two proposals we have in front of us now, the Main Municipal and the R H R Smith here. I think what we ought to do is start off by giving this to the treasurer, have her look over it first. And I would like to have either our treasurer or our town administrator make a couple of phone calls to some towns where they've done work.
Yeah.
So we can get a reference from them.
Definitely.
Email something to us, whatever, before we even bring them in.
I agree, yeah.
Because I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Yeah, because Tom and I found, not to interrupt you, but Tom and I found that one of the engagements turned out to be, you know, I mean, one of the, one of our neighboring towns that recently used them and they are a year and a half out, still waiting for an audit.
So we just want to make sure.
We're taking them off the list.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to waste anybody else's time. You know, Smith, obviously, we know what they've done for us. But I think that's where we start. We'll start the process there and get some references.
So let's do our homework, but all I'm saying is, I think we need to, I need to talk to them. Whether the rest of the board does or not, but in order for me to make, take a position on this, I need to talk to the principals.
I, I need to know before I decide what route I'm going here. Be fiscally responsible here to make sure that we can justify the difference in money between the two.
Okay, that's fine.
So, you know, so we just, you know, that's kind of what we do. So when we start with that?
Okay, we'll get references, have the treasurer take a look at them, and I'll report back next Wednesday.
Signing bids?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing?
I can, um... I think I'm going to pull a Tom then, and I'm going to try to call around, see if I can find some people myself. I got, I got some contractor friends. I guess we'll have to do something here because we need to get some signed done, so...
Yeah, I'm trying to get Jason to hand them out of the window.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll make some phone calls. I know a lot of signers, so I just kind of just stayed out of it at this point. But if we're not going to get any bids, we're going to have to figure something out, so...
Is the bid document posted?
Online, homepage?
Online, so if, if anybody is watching and they know of somebody that may be interested in this, they can be directed to the website to see the bid and encouraged to submit something. Very good.
The problem we're having right now, though, being a contractor, our phones are going off the wringer right now. We're not out looking for work. They're coming to us. So people aren't online looking for work right now, so that's the problem we're going to have. And every, all the contractors I know right now are months out, so even if we find one, good luck. But we'll see what we can do. Okay, Flat Ground Road.
Okay, so last week, Adam shared with us where he believed the numbers stood on Flat Ground Road, per the treasurer. You guys have all seen the emails by now that, that we received. You saw the responses. So we've been doing some digging on this because of everything that's gone on, and I have some updates for you. Some good, not so good, some kind of, okay. So according to the treasurer, she sent this email to everybody, but for public record, "So in reviewing the lines for Flat Ground Road, I found a discrepancy. It appears that a charge had, should have been charged to account 10522 was actually charged to 10523 in error. I have reversed that payment and the balance is actually $2,219, which may be enough for grading this spring. Tom, to answer your questions, a budget has been voted specifically for $5,000 at the town maintenance for Flat Ground and not incorporated into the District Two winter and summer maintenance." So the conversation I really think that, that we all started having regarding this was that in 2018, we know this, this agreement was put forth to the voters. And the article very clearly says, "To see if the town will vote to allow the selectmen to enter in the following agreement with property owners on Flat Ground Road." The contract states that you will do A, B, and C. And although the lawyer doesn't have a big concern with you putting some sort of number in the article for, to get an, you know, for guidance for the voters, for the, for yourselves, it is his opinion that you have to follow the contract regardless, do only what it says, no more, no less, but regardless of the amount, you would have to fund it. So assuming you're only doing what the contract says, and it clearly says that the town shall "Hereafter, maintain the road by grading and repairing the surface of the traveled way and repairing the drainage facilities as needed. Winter maintenance shall include snow plowing." So whatever that costs, that line has to happen, period. In doing all of this and digging it all out, Kim was the selectman then, and she can recall that after town meeting in June of 2000, let me back up, in May of 2018, and I brought the Flat Ground Road file. In May of 2018, the Board of Selectmen sent out, sent out a letter, some of you may recall, and it says, "Dear Flat Ground Road property owner enclosed, please find a proposed agreement the Board of Selectmen would like to put forward before the voters. Please review the attached and essentially tell us if you're interested in or you would support this article." So we received back statements, "As a property owner, are you in favor of moving forward the agreement to the voters?" And they were yes or no's. And, and based on those responses versus the real estate listing that we have that was dated 2018, whoever the owners were, the board made the decision to move it forward. Now, I reviewed several legal emails that we received right around 2018. Mr. Lankowski essentially wrote the agreement. It was his request to send it to Brad Moore as well, to make sure that nothing, that all was well in it. And Brad made some recommended changes that the Board of Selectmen at the time didn't take. And I point that out because after town meeting and after all of this, after it passed by town meeting, I have a brief recollection of the conversations and I'm going to bank on Kim with some of this, but we talked about it briefly. The board's instruction at that point was that they believed town meeting approved the agreement and we were done and we continued to go forward with it. So in 2018, we plowed it that winter. There was, in the first article, the first article after this, it said, "Flat Ground Road graded." And the next year, the word grading was removed. That's neither here nor there. The problem is, is that according to Lankowski, you don't have a signed agreement from every single owner from, from Flat Ground Road. That was never done. And it wasn't done because the board at the time felt like the townspeople approved the agreement, but what they were actually approving was the right to enter into an agreement. So what he's recommending you do immediately is take this contract, copy and paste it just as it appeared in the warrant that year, and send it certified to each Flat Ground Road property owner. And essentially give them 30 days, as you would have back in 18, or as you would have today, and get all those signed, at least have on file. But as far as the money, it, it's irrelevant whether the number is in there or not, in his opinion. And I do have in your packet on Flat Ground Road, a letter from Lankowski that says, "Jennifer, you've asked my opinion regarding the effect, the effect of passage of Article 26A at the June 8, 16th town meeting regarding Flat Ground Road. Article 26A, as adopted, authorized the selectmen to enter into the agreement as set forth in the article. Adoption of the article did not put the, the agreement in force. The agreement would have become effective only after execution by the selectmen and each property owner on Flat Ground Road. This interpretation is confirmed by the language of the following Article 26B, which authorizes the appropriation of funds for repairs and improvements contingent upon the town and property owners reaching the agreement as previously voted on. Therefore, in the absence of agreement executed by the selectmen and the Flat Ground Road property owners, there is no basis for the town to continue maintenance." The time, if anything, is good because we've gotten through winter. It is what it is at this point. We send these certifies out immediately and we start getting signatures back.
What happens if we don't get them all back?
According to your attorney, because that's, I said to him, because I asked him that exact question, I said, you know, "Show me where in there it says I have to get 100% of the signatures back." And he said, "It's not an agreement with the Flat Ground property owners if you don't get them all back." He doesn't, it was his initial opinion, and he said, "We would discuss that as it got close. If, if we got to that case, that you wouldn't have an agreement, that all the property owners had to be in favor." I mean, I struggle with why they wouldn't be, though. The road is getting plowed and maintained.
Right, I just, you know...
I mean, it's, it's something, I guess, to discuss then, but, I mean, I feel like they would support having the road plowed and maintained. And we would only go as far as where the agreement said. Well, back in 2018...
Many property owners, I should say.
Back in 2018, it was, it was 32. And some of them may be duplicates, but, so...
And changed, yeah.
Uh, 32.
How many responses did we get back?
Well, it was just a survey the first time. We got 16 back.
All, all in favor?
Yes, absolutely. But I would think that we would amend. I mean, and I don't know how many, how many are, are after Mrs. Snyder's property, but based on the way the article, I have to look at the actual 2018, but didn't the article stop it at the end? So would the property owners beyond that, would they even be, would they, you know, would their vote matter? I mean, they're a Flat Ground Road property owner, but if the agreement stops at Snyder's, how many houses are after that, roughly? One.
Oh.
So I guess we would deal with that in the time came, if the property owner even, if it even became an issue, but...
That's a whole different issue in itself.
Right, because I think the article stopped it there, but that's something your attorney, so...
How long is this road?
Well...
Adam, how, how long is Flat Ground Road, Adam?
Uh, that's a good question.
Okay.
Dennis?
I was going to say, not yet.
And in this area beyond that is another... So it's roughly a mile, but, you know, 60% of it was, was covered under this, this article?
Right, the motion that was made in 2018 stopped it at a particular point, so... But we would have to get legal on that. We'll send it to everybody, see what happens. I mean, and he said, you know, give him a good... a good, we want to give them 30 days, and we want to stress how important it is, send it out certified, and.
But our intent is to continue to maintain it until this all gets resolved.
Absolutely, yeah, the town authorized you to enter into this agreement, we owe it to the owners to.
At the last meeting, there was an issue about grading that needed, was.
Well, there's still $2,700 in the account.
So, who's gonna do that work, Adam?
Well, I mean, that, that's where we want to get these certifies out right away, what time of year do you normally grade? Because now that you know that you don't have a contract, it would be nice to have them signed and done before he graded.
We, we were supposed to have the contracts done before the, the actual services started. Never got done.
I mean, not, not to say.
Four years later.
Yeah.
We've been doing it for four years, and it was clearly the town's intent, we're gonna make every, we're gonna go through the effort to get the contract signed.
Selectmen didn't know at that point that they were in violation.
I'm sorry?
I mean, but you didn't, in all fairness and defense, we didn't know, you know what I mean, selectmen didn't know at that point, you know now. What time of year do you normally grade it?
Uh, it depends on my get, him over there to grade.
Roughly.
Anytime.
Okay, so, we'll hustle on follow-through and getting these through, and I'll update you each week on how many went out and how many we got back.
How much time are we gonna give them to get them back?
Well, I mean, you know, that's, we certainly want to give them enough time, but we don't, you know, that's up to you, it's your letter, it's going out.
I think it's best off for the town of Acton to have it done as soon as possible, give them a month.
Right, I mean, we, you know, we're gonna go as far as putting a self-addressed stamped envelope in it, you know, make it as easy as possible for them to send it back and bring it in.
If we don't get it, we, we can do some kind of follow-up with them. If we don't get a response, can we place some calls and find out why they aren't responding?
I mean, that's, you know, that's your direction to give me, whatever, you know what I mean, every, I mean, at some point, there's gotta be some responsibility on the property owner, too, we can only.
No, I appreciate that.
Kind of like unlicensed dogs, they can only do so much.
No, but it's affecting all the other property.
No, I, I agree, I agree, start knocking on some doors, too, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, for the phone numbers, we don't, the town doesn't store phone numbers unless they have dogs registered, so.
Okay, let's cross that bridge, we'll see what we get.
Okay, we'll, we'll send them out certified and certainly do our best, and see if we can gain some help on the road, people that might be able to help get them delivered.
I'm sure.
Are there no easements required out of this? Someone raise your signal.
Uh, based on the agreement that was signed in 18?
Don't we already have?
Town already has easements.
I was gonna say, I thought we already had them.
All right, great.
We'll settle that one.
Yep.
Okay.
So, how long am I giving them in this letter?
Thirty.
Thirty days, yep.
And just for clear, is he grading before that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's good, so it doesn't hold it, doesn't, doesn't hold it together, okay. So, we all know.
Okay, chip in bids, Transfer Station and Road.
Yeah, so I spoke to Mr. Langley, and he has been reaching out, getting some additional prices, it does look like he might have another person that will provide one, it may not be in the right timeline, but he's asked for us to table it one week.
Okay, Transfer Station and Road.
Well, I, I meant the sand and salt, don't you have?
Okay, I was, I was a little confused, I didn't know if we had, I didn't, I didn't know if there was a new project we didn't know about.
One little thing.
Yeah, I caught something, you know, okay, warrant recommendations.
All right, so, here we are, we have the warrant in front of you, I guess, you know, as I mentioned last week, you guys have done it in a variety of different ways, your recommendations start on Article 8, so I guess, you know, you can do a few things, I would recommend you go through the zonings individually, and then determine, you know, from there down, I mean, it is your warrant, so I'd like to think that you guys support everything.
My idea was to go through the zoning, and then when we come to our stuff, stuff that we submitted ourselves, if there's any questions, if there's no questions, do a block vote on the, on the warrant article, so, because we, we submitted them, we know what they are.
And we don't have any, no one's recusing on any of the articles that, that I can think of, right? We didn't come across that throughout the period, so it should be all.
Is there an article in here on Flat Road?
Well, so, it's written the way that, it's written in there.
Which that number?
So, Article, Article 37.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, it's written just the way that it was when they made the recommendation, it says Flat Ground Road 5,000. Now, you could take that number out and divide it over winter and maintenance, we would still have to go back to the Warren and Finance, because we changed the article, you can leave it, because it's irrelevant according to your attorney, you have to follow the contract anyways, you make note to change, you know, to do it differently next year, what is your?
Well, we, we just, we just got the new number of 22, $2,300, whatever, that's left over, okay?
That's good.
Meaning that there's obviously enough money to do what we're gonna do, so.
And even if there wasn't.
So, I, I, I believe we just leave that number.
Just, I think we need to make a mental note, that it doesn't look like this particular article is necessary, so for next year, let's make sure we talk about.
Take that line out.
Taking it out, just rolling it into the road budget and be done with it, not continually bring this up.
I've got a whole different opinion on that.
Well, we can talk about it then, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, starting to revisit.
Next year, we can do that.
So, it stays and everything stays for this year? All right, so we'll just sum up through these, so Article 8 was the proposal amendment to the zoning relative to accessory dwelling units, and I just ask when someone makes a motion that you make it to accept the article as written, and then you'll vote accordingly. So, this is the accessory dwelling units, Article 8.
Article 8, okay, just see if the town will.
All of these have been reviewed by council?
Yes, and the planning board took the recommendation.
Planning board, who obviously has approved them, but council's agreed with the language in all of these.
Correct, and the planning board took their recommendation, so that's an extra.
Yes, yes, okay, great, thank you.
And Warren Finance has done all their recommendations also.
Mhm.
Warren Finance has done all their recommendations also.
Yeah, so, and they're listed right above them, or right below yours.
So, we need to take each of these individually, or?
The zoning we're going to, because, just the zoning.
Just the zoning, I see, okay.
Do you need us to read the whole?
Make a motion.
Just make a motion to accept Article 8?
As.
As written?
Second.
All in favor?
All right, so the next one is the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to mixed-use structures.
Which page you on?
Uh, it's the very next one, right?
Oh, okay, it is the next.
Page two, yeah, mixed use.
Some mixed use.
Really, they're adding just that one line on page three, yeah?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve Article 9 as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Perfect, Article 10 is the proposed amendments relative to residential rental units.
Make a motion that we accept Article 10?
As.
As written.
All in favor?
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Can you give me a minute? This has the insurance?
No, it was taken out.
I thought it was, it was left in there.
No, it wa, well, the property owner shall provide a valid certificate of insurance covering rental as a use, it took, they, the lawyer took off the piece naming the town as.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
David, how did you vote?
I'm against it.
Huh?
I'm not for it.
Oh, so against, okay, so two to one, thank you. All right, so 11 is to see the town will vote the proposed amendments related to structure, and this is just the definition of structure, you can see they made a change to.
I make a motion to approve Article 11 as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Article 12 is proposed amendments relative to tiny homes, it's all brand-new, I believe.
Somewhere in my step, tiny homes, there it is.
Top of page eight.
I make a motion to approve Article 12 as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Opposed. Two to one, opposed. All right, Article 13 is the proposed amendments relative to solar energy systems, and this was the other one that the attorney made a change to, and they, this was regarding how much you could see in it, was the last change. So, and the planning board, I mean, not planning board, I'm sorry, the Warren and Finance voted this down, and just, just so that, to update you, so that, as I heard, the biggest concern from the Warren and Finance on this one was really pertaining to, to number eight on page 12, they supported the surety in the cash escrow and 125% of the estimated removal cost, the planning board that I, I mean, the Warren and Finance that I heard speak didn't have a concern with that, it was a concern that, a little further down, it says that the surety will be reviewed by the planning board or designee every five years and renewed or adjusted as necessary, so they struggled with the, the idea that it would come back before the planning board every five years and possibly change that surety bond, so, it was a one to five vote. And then the other piece that's in there is that.
Was it true they, they didn't establish a basis for determining what that, that replacement cost should be, or that, I guess, not replacement, but the disposal cost?
The article says that it's 125% of the estimated removal cost.
There's no indication of how that's gonna be determined?
I'm not aware of that, I mean, not to say.
So, I mean, I, I was at the Finance Committee, and I agree with some of their, their points, and the issue I have with it is when you put down, and 125 of the estimated renewal cost, in 20 years, you have no idea what that cost is gonna be, okay?
Well, and that may be why the planning board wanted you to keep coming back.
But, at the same time, as you get, you, so that's the, that, there's the other problem I have with it, is you allow them come in, you go through the whole process, you come in, and then every five years, they may say, "Well, you know what, I think you're gonna owe us another 50 grand."
Right.
That's why I was asking about.
And then, and now, now we have the problem.
Then you, there ought to be a basis.
And, and there may be, I mean, I don't, I don't attend the planning board meetings, so I don't know.
Because I, I, I'm, obviously, I'm not on the planning board, but as a taxpayer and a, and a select board member, and when you're looking down through this, and you see the 125%, what is that for? That's for removal in case they decide to walk away.
Yeah.
Now, that, that, like, it's a little sketchy, because if I'm, if I have a project up on, say, say I'm on the H Road, and they, and we charge them $94,000, which I think that's what it was, $94,000 is an escrow for that project, in 20 years, it's, it may cost $300,000 to do that, wouldn't it be better to walk away, instead of spending the extra $206,000?
I think it ought to be renewed and updated, I get that.
But, but the problem is, you renew and update it, you, you know, the, the person or the company that's putting that in has no sense of how do I, how do I know what's gonna happen, because you have, there's nothing here staying, and every five years, you're gonna, you're gonna upgrade it 5% or 6%.
Right, and in their defense, I mean, there is a line, if you, if you keep reading, the 125% of the estimated removal, it says, "Such costs," and I don't know if this is your base, Tom, "will account for any physical removal of the structures, systems, equipment, security barriers, electrical lines, disposal of the solid hazardous waste, revegetation of the site as necessary to minimize erosion." It's still not a number, but it, it says something.
But no, it just tells what the reclamation's gonna be, I just, I don't.
What the cost will account for.
I just don't agree with having them come back.
If, if I was on the other side of this transaction, a business trying to figure this out, I would have this open-ended liability, not know what it is every five years, and to be determined, I would, I would be very cautious about this, and I think it's just fair to them and to the town to understand what the basis for this is.
I'm not, I'm not a big solar guy, right? But if I was, I would think this would deter people from coming to Town of Acton.
Yeah.
Because it, you know, because every five years, you're, you're guessing, gee, I wonder if I'm gonna be having, bring, bring a big fat check with me, you know?
Are these concerns similar to what the Warren and Finance Committee raised?
The Warren and Finance, as I recall, the conversation, and I think we've heard from one or two of the members, was regarding the every five years and not knowing what the.
The uncertainty around it.
And there was another.
And the other piece, and I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna let Dennis elaborate, but I feel like the applicant must demonstrate the project is not viewable from a public road might have come up.
That was the one, I, I apologize, because the warrant that I have, I left probably in my pickup truck, I had all these notes written down, and that was one of the things that really, really bothered me, was, didn't want it visible from a lake?
Yeah.
Or a road, okay? So, unfortunately, Town of Acton's full of hills, and say, say I decide that I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it up here on the H Road somewhere, right? Well, just using the H Road, because it's the closest one, and my next-door neighbor has 200 acres of land, and he decides to cut off all his property, he makes it so I can't do it, right? So, that's, that's a, that's a hardship on the person who wants to put this, this, this in, okay? And honestly, you can see a lot of things from the lakes around here, a lot of areas, that's, that's making a lot of places not able to be used, so I, I just think there's some stuff in here that they really ought to relook at.
Maybe they'll bring it back before you, we'll see what happens.
But this was not recommended by the Warren and Finance.
Correct, so, prove, prove the article as written failed, one to five.
Okay.
And I do believe that the, you know, I, I was talking to the code officer about it, and he'll, he'll, and I, you know, I, I do think that this does fail, that they will go back and relook.
They know they need some guidelines, and maybe they'll listen to these discussions and take something from it.
Have we got a motion on this one already?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion.
To do what?
To, to approve Article 13.
As written?
As written.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right, zero to three, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so does anybody have any concerns on any of the articles of 14 through 72 that they want to talk about, spend time on, vote for individually?
Social Services, where are they?
What numbers did you say again, 14 through?
Uh, the rest of the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Social Services, David starts on?
I'm looking for your community action.
All right, so they start, it looks like Article 41.
Is it 41?
Well, 41 is the cemetery committee, what are you looking for?
Looking for your community action.
Your, your county community action, 50.
50?
Yep.
Yep, there it is, I want to refrain, I'm gonna abstain from that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm a contract, I never really thought about it, and I probably shouldn't be voting on that.
So, let's do Article 50, can we do a motion?
Make a motion to do, to, yeah, sorry, make a motion to approve Article 50 as written?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
The record shows one abstention.
Yep, that's the only one that I had a concern with, I, I thought about that after, and you know, after being enlightened last week, I thought about it, so you know what, I never even thought of that, so.
So, I mean, I've gone through this, I mean.
Tom, do you have any concerns?
I don't know how you, I mean, I think we've done.
I think we talked about these in detail.
I think we were pretty thorough when we did this, well, and, and I think we discussed that if there was any issues, that they would be taken care of on the town floor.
So, we would make a motion to accept Article 14 through?
Seventy-two, with the exception of 50.
Seventy-two, with the exception of 50 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, so we'll get the recommendations typed in, I'll email it over to you to proof, and we'll get the warrants signed next week.
Awesome.
That's what I'd say.
Oh, I'm sorry, policies, I started reading the policies, policies, where's my?
You want to look in?
No, I've got them right here, I was just looking for my agenda.
All right, so we gave you three last week, um, if we can start with the acceptance of payment policy, we talked a little bit about this last week. I did talk to the treasurer, and the only payment that, um, we wanna be careful how we word is that we do allow the rec goodie shack to collect cash. They start with so much petty cash and they turn it over, so that, we had talked about making it all payments, you know, go directly to the tax collector's office, but they do, we do allow that. There really isn't any, once in a while, a fire rescue department, a fire rescue donation will come in, but it's normally in a form of a check and it would come to the treasurer. The transfer station, they, um, everything gets mailed, all the bottles, checks get mailed directly, so there's really not any, um- Shouldn't have any changes on the first line, I mean, we're not sure that the second line is, is necessary because it, it applies to everybody, so.
Right. How often does the petty cash fund get, uh, cleared?
Well, the treasurer approves it weekly, and I disperse out of it, so.
So, it's, it's, uh, excess, there's an amount-
Two hundred dollars.
Two hun- anything above that weekly is turned into the town?
Well, when you say petty cash, so we have a, we have a bag of two hundred dollars vault in case Bob needs to buy water for the transfer station, so he buys it, I reimburse him, the slip goes in the safe.
Yeah? And then you reimburse the petty cash?
So, when it, yeah, when it gets down to a certain amount, you'll see a check request with a breakdown of where all the petty cash went and all the receipts.
And, and the snack bar?
Well, that's the rec, so we start, that's different, so that's not our petty cash.
Yeah.
So, usually, in the beginning of a season, we'll give them two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
They go do their shopping, hot dogs, hamburgers, they bring us a receipt, so we know what they have left, and then each week, they bring in, um-
Receipts, and you'll, you'll discuss-
Well, they, they, yes, yes.
Bring it back to two hundred dollars?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
So, it says where this includes, but it's not limited to-
I mean, it includes all departments, so I'm, we're thinking we just take that whole line out.
Yeah, we don't need that, do we?
Well, yeah, cause I was saying, we're, we're talking about maybe doing some charging at the transfer station, and there, there may be some money exchanged at some point up there.
Right, and that's why I said, so all employees and volunteers who handle cash-
Yeah.
Have to apply to be bonded, so that's that. So, it's gonna be all town employees and volunteers, so the next sentence is kinda can come out because it's all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the next, I mean, it is preferred that all payments, not just cash, all payments-
All payments.
Be directed to the tax collector's office with a receipt. Um, any cash or checks accepted by a department shall be remitted to the treasurer within two, or three businesses, five feels like-
I, I, I had three, but I, I thought five was too much, but three, you know?
We have a part-time treasurer, so you could, you know, um, so we'll do three. Anything else on that one that jumps out?
So, we're gonna strike the line.
We're gonna strike the second line altogether.
And change five to three.
Change five to three, and we're gonna change the cash to all payments, right? Um, access to public meeting policy, I reviewed-
Do you wanna take a vote on this while we have it?
Well, I gotta make the changes, and I'll present it to you next week for signatures.
Oh, okay, all right.
I gotta go pretty it up.
Okay.
So, the access to policy, uh, to public meeting policy, reviewed that statute, can't see anything in there that, that would require a change, thoughts on this one?
Didn't see anything in this one either.
It just says that you're basically following the freedom of information, and that anybody can attend the meeting, they can make recordings, yeah, it's pretty basic. So, we'll just fine, do this one as a review date of next week.
Okay, you don't wanna make a motion now?
No, no motion.
Okay.
All right, so appointed, reappointment policy, so the first change that I had, obviously, anywhere that there's select men, I changed to select board based on the new guidance. Then on A, it says, "Appointments are normally for one, two, or three years, depending on the position I'm in, and committee, and will be staggered accordingly," so I'm just putting a little clarity there. Uh, a couple of capitalizations I won't bore you with, um, yeah, mine are just grammatical, grammar issues. Other than those two words. This is the one, David, you told me to remind you on.
Yeah, so, well, the concern I had was with these, these appointments, um, and reappointments, as, you know, you get people who get elected to, uh, committees at town meeting, and then you have people who are appointed to committees. And, um, I, I feel that if you get elected to a committee, you should be appointed to another committee. Cause of what's happening is you end up being on every committee, and I like to, somewhere in this, in this ordinance, on this, uh, policy, I'm sorry, not ordinance policy, um, I like to make sure that we can kinda travel that road to get into, so we can, um, leave some of these spots open with people who are already elected and on boards and committees. Um, and this is, I think, is the place we have to do it, it's right here.
So, thoughts on the board before I give you some proposed language?
I use, uh, I'm not sure.
So, if you're elected-
What you're suggesting, if somebody is elected to a committee-
If someone is elected to a committee, they will not be appointed-
They cannot serve on another committee?
Same, they cannot serve on it, they, they will not be appointed to another committee, so, cause you have no control over your elected committees.
What, what has the history been in Acton? I suspect it's, it's been for some time that people have served on multiple committees, elected board or committee, and, uh, an appointed board or committee, that this is a longstanding practice in town?
Well, I mean, I don't know how long, I think in the last eight years, it's been worse than, you, not worse, but, uh, it's not really bad. More common than, uh, cause I think it was, I feel we had a lot more, uh, a lot more people volunteering on these committees than we have in the last few years. Um, when you look at the committees we have, when you have one resignation, when one person resigns, they end up resigning from three different committees. And, and, and honestly, if you look at it, and we've had that happen this year, and, um, so what that does is that, that person has taken two other spots somebody else could've filled. And, um, then you have the issues where you have, say you're on the Finance Committee, you're an elected, you're elected into that spot, but you're also appointed into another spot that's making recommendation, and then you have the vulnerable recommendations that you're given from another committee. It's, it's kinda messy.
How come we don't, why do we do both? How come it's not just all elected or all appointed?
That all, that all goes back to how the committee was first created in Acton, we would have to, we would go back to all the-
I just didn't, you know.
All the town meeting books, when the committees were created or established, those guidelines were set then, so you would have to, if you wanted to make everything elected, let's just say, you would have to put warrant articles on to start changing some of them.
I understand where you're coming from, but I also feel that we don't have enough people-
Well, and you're right.
To fill these positions.
But the problem is, so what we've done is we've just conceded and said, "Well, we got the same people in all the committees," because, you know, we have the, uh, we have the issue that we had at the Warren Finance, because we had one member that was on a planning board, okay? But he was also on the Finance Committee, but he wasn't allowed to do anything because he was asked to recuse himself because he was on this committee, so it turns into a, a, you, you, you get rid of all these issues.
I understand, I just-
I think we ought to clarify that issue.
No, 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 and that's-
No, I, I, I understand that issue.
Yeah.
And, uh, especially having people on multiple committees, you know, that's likely, and in fact, I think has come up quite a bit, that, that occurrence has occurred. I think we ought to clarify what the town's position is on that, and whether or not, I, I'm not sure that it is a conflict of interest, uh, to be honest with you, but we ought to, um, maybe consult M M and A or some other source to understand, does that really represent a conflict? If it doesn't, then I think we just ought to make that clear to all the committees and act accordingly. It's been my understanding, when we've had openings on committees, there have not been a number of people that have come forward and volunteered. You're basically fortunate if you can find someone to come forward for the opening, the, the open position, it's not like you're-
There's a lot more behind that, though. There's a, there's a lot, there's stuff, it's behind the scenes stuff that I believe, from what I get out of some of the people in the public, is because of these same people on every committee, that they don't wanna be on these committees. And that's why we have a lot of people who are, well, don't wanna be on these committees, because there, you're not getting, you're not getting a fresh view, cause you get the same people on every committee. And when you start getting new people on the committees, more people want to, will, will wanna, uh, I believe, contribute.
What May Municipal is gonna tell you is if the, um, it's gonna depend on the committee. So, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, there are serious conflicts going on there, the Warren and Finance, um, their, their recommendations, there's no, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
What, what's the next step that can happen? So, and not to take away from anything that the Warren and Finance, cause they, you know what I mean, but, um, you know, with the situation with the Planning Board, you know, if he had not have recused himself, it would've been fine. If, if certain people on there now don't recuse themselves tied to other committees, it would've been fine, because there's no legal binding behind their recommendation.
It's all subject to approval by a higher court.
If the Planning Board or the Board of Selectmen do something, it's gonna be different because they're a, um, a quasi-pro committee, it's different.
As a selectman, could I be appointed to the Planning Committee?
No, no, but I'm saying your, your decisions have legal actions.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
The Planning Board's decision have legal actions, the Warren and Finance, their recommendations do not have legal finance.
Their recommendations only, capital planning, road committee, those are all recommendations only.
The recommendations, so, you know, so that, that idea of a conflict really doesn't, I mean, it might exist amongst the committee, and they might have a conversation, maybe this is, this is the place that you pointed out, and maybe the happy medium is saying that first refusal will be given to people that don't currently sit on, you know, elected committees, which you should be doing anyways to get new people involved, you know, maybe something like that, but-
Or consideration be given.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, let me, let me see what I can come up with with words and present, and then something else to you.
Do we think we need word changes for that?
Well, that's why we're going through it.
Well, if we, the hap- the medium would be, is that you would give it first refusal to people that might not already sit on it.
Okay, I'll wait till next week. I'll, I'll wait till next week.
Is that what I'm hearing, I thought you just said yes to that.
I'm, I'm fine with it as it is, but, but if others-
Kim?
Oh, well, I think it's a good idea to try to get other people in, you know?
I mean, just cause the policy says that you may, you may give first consideration to people that don't already sit on it, doesn't mean that the board has to take it.
That's right, right, right. I mean, it's just something we could agree that, that we're gonna do.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just trying to find some way to get some other people involved, and, um, I thought this might be a way, and make it so that, you know, they can get their foot in the door.
Okay.
And am I putting anything in here about conflicts, or what am I, am I?
Well, I think that's something that probably should be-
I don't think that belongs in here, but I think we-
No, but it's something when, when somebody comes on, we sit down and-
I think we ought to pursue and clarify for our committees, what represents a conflict when you're in this situation.
Yeah, it's tough, because, you know, um, after, you know, we heard, we heard, uh, Mr. Broder last week talk about it, I understood some of the stuff that he was talking about, um, when you're at a, um, at a road committee meeting, we'll use road committee instead of the finances time, and road committee, and someone's talking about their road should be paid before every other road in town is. You're an elected member to that committee showing bias for your road, and just your road only. I've seen that multiple times on that committee, there's, that's, that's obviously something there that maybe when you're at town meeting, you know, you would consider not voting that person on that committee because of that reason, but the problem is, when the names come up to the front, you only get enough names to fill the position, so you get the same people every time. So, um, the Finance Committee, um, we had an individual vote on a road article that, you know, clearly had something to do with him, but can you tie it together? Nah, it's petty, so you could tie a lot of things into it, you know?
I think people on these committees and boards genuinely struggle with this issue, about what is a conflict or not, I think it's, it's very genuine and honest on the about.
I feel it's pretty easy for people on that committee to tell somebody else they had a conflict of interest, but can't figure out when they have their own.
But to recuse, but to go so far as to recuse themselves.
But they don't, they ask everybody else to.
Well, I, I, let, let's not go down there.
Maybe, maybe this is where, where we need to educate people before they- I said, maybe, you know, when new people come on the board, they need to be educated on, you know, these, when you sit on this board, you know, you gotta think about if there's a conflict.
I don't think there is agreement, uh, within the town about what constitutes a conflict of interest.
I mean, that's, right, I don't even lay it out.
I think, to do, in all fairness, to people that are serving on these boards, to avoid them being criticized or whatever, the town ought to clarify, what is a conflict in this town or not? And I, I just think it would be worthwhile for us to go through that, make that clear to people, and they can act accordingly.
We have it right in our selectmen's, uh, you know, our classes, our selectmen board stuff there, you know, the conflict of interest, we understand what that's all about, um-
I, I dealt with this for thirty-five years, I, I, in terms of conflict of interest, I, you know, um, and it's, it's never black and white. And it's always gray, and I, but, but I think creating some standards for people to clarify what is a conflict, what is not, so that people can, you know, make good judgments about when to recuse themselves or not.
I think that's a good idea.
I think after some of the discussions we've had in the last week or two, maybe they will, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, we're, all right, I gotta find my check, I gotta, yeah, there we go, bailing me out again. New business appointments.
Okay, so the first one, um, is for Bevan Corbin to become a regular Planning Board member, um, he was an alternate, and he's going to be moving, moved up in the, um, resignation of Mr. Broder, who was a regular member, so, that's your first one. The next two that you have are for the Moussum Watershed Dam Coalition, um, and I just wanna take a, a minute to talk about that. This kinda came to light, um, if we recall, on the warrant, and the Warren and Finance made a recommendation, they made a recommendation on the, um, dam article to lower it based on what they thought was, um, was fit. Uh, the Chair of the Warren and Finance and myself looked at the contract and kind of had a conversation about, you know, what happens if, and, you know, how did this budget come together and, and so forth. So, this contract was signed in June of two thousand and fourteen between Sanford, Acton, and Shapley, and, um, it talks about the people that, uh, who serve on it, um, but it essentially says that the Board of Directors will be comprised of ten members with nine, nine voting members. The one that isn't, um, I believe is the city manager, but nevertheless, as it goes through the duties and responsibilities, it says that the Board of Directors shall annually approve an operating budget. The Board of Directors shall annually work on the capital improvement. So, this kinda got things, this, this hasn't been an active committee, it hasn't been an active committee, so as far as the, the town knew until taking a close look at this contract, um, since the, the work was done on the dam and Ed was attending all of the meetings, they, they hadn't been meeting. But it wasn't until, um, Dennis pointed out a couple of things, and we pulled the contract, that really said that, you know, these, these Acton representatives need to be, you know, should be being part of this, these steps, so what's going on with it? So, we reached out to the city of Sanford, and they, um, they deferred me to Roland Legere, who was the Shapley, who was the Shapley Chair of the committee, and he asked for a copy of the budget, he had not seen it, and he asked for a copy of the contract, so we've sent that over to him. Um, I reached out to, at the same time, before I got ahead of myself, to Lee Robitord and Adele Skritchfield, who are our two Acton representatives, and said, you know, "Have you been getting emails, were you involved in this process?" You know, maybe they just took me off the email list, that's possible. They said, "No, we haven't heard anybody from any, we haven't heard from anybody in some time," since they did, since we had that special town meeting and worked on the dam. So, somehow, um, we've just kinda gotten, um, set aside.
Both towns, both towns?
I didn't, I haven't checked with Shapley yet.
Yeah.
Um, they've got some things going on over there, so I don't know if, if they've, um, and I'm waiting for Roland to get back to me, but, um, so I guess some of this, Dennis, is to kinda update you on what we found out, um, but at the same time, these two are interested in being on it, um, so they'd like to be reappointed, and-
That's Lee Robitord?
Lee Robitord and Adele Skritchfield, um, but there is a piece in here that, you know, you wanna keep in mind and maybe start thinking ahead, that in regards to termination of the agreement, um, is that if there was a non-appropriation of a member's municipality based on their legislative body, the contract will be, um- Terminated, and Roland Legere really would like a chance to talk to you guys, um, but like I said, it, it all started essentially because I think that Dennis and I started coming up with some questions on the budget, and who came up with these numbers, and kinda trickled down that, um, Acton wasn't involved.
It sounds like Acton's allowed three representatives?
They are allowed three.
So, you, you vindicated two people?
We vindicated the two that were already on there, the third one-
An elected board member?
Yep, a select board member.
Well, no, so Ed was one of these two. So, this is what it says, it says that "Two members appointed by the selectmen of the Town of Acton for a two-year term."
Yeah.
But it also says, um, "One person owning property on Moussum Lake appointed by the selectmen for a two-year term." So, and I don't wanna quote, but I feel like it's Lee, one of these live on Moussum.
He is square.
Okay, so then it's Adele.
Yeah.
So, Adele could serve as your Moussum-
Satisfied that.
Yep, so you, so the other open we had would be Mr. Walsh, I have not reached out to him to see if he's interested in joining back, certainly one of you can. In the past, it has been a selectman just to kinda follow along.
Well, it should be, because we're the ones that have to bring it back to-
But right now, you know, right now, we need to figure out why, why the Board of Directors isn't being involved, why Acton's Board of Directors didn't help put this budget together.
Does it appear that Sanford is just sending the budget and sending us the bill?
I'm gonna let you make that determination.
That's probably what you found, right?
Exactly what I found.
Okay, all right.
So, but I want, you know, but we want to send it to Shapley, so let's get their opinion before we get ahead of it.
Did we talk to Ed at all, see whether or not he had gone to any-
If the two of them did not, no, I didn't, but I'll reach out to Ed as well, um-
I'm not sure how we determine who on the select board might do that representation, I'm happy to volunteer.
Yeah, okay, uh, let's see after town meeting.
Unless one of you would like to?
No, I, you know what, I think that's a good job for you, Tom.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll create an appointment for Tom for next week for the Moussum Watershed, and hopefully, uh, we'll have more- And hopefully, uh, we'll have more answers as to why the quote, board of directors as laid out in their formation wasn't included in the capital improvement project or the budget that we have. But these two, um, anyways, if you would be so kind.
So.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's all funded, so.
Well, no.
The warrant article is on there. The warrant and finance will defend their own recommendation.
They made a recommendation to get rid of what, ninety-two hundred dollars of it?
Yeah, they pulled a portion of it out.
Unfortunate part, of course, we gotta get all this figured out, but by taking away that ninety-two hundred dollars, it's essentially just saying, we're done with the contract.
Which, yeah, okay.
And that's, we, and unfortunately, that's, um, I don't know, um, there's certain individuals don't want the contract. I'm, I'm not a huge fan of it, but I, I do believe that it's something that we should be doing.
I, I would imagine this is very important to the people on the lake.
Moussum, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that this dam is very important to them. So, uh, and, and right now it controls the water level?
Yeah.
Does it not?
We, well, it, in theory, it gives you some, uh, three voices, um, whether or not it does. I guess that's all somebody's opinion.
Guess we'll find out.
But I think we really.
They're gonna notify us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we, uh, we really wanna have, um, all the information for town meeting, just because, um, the warrant and finance committee does wanna discontinue this.
So that's their recommendation, to discontinue it?
Well, no. They didn't do it, they didn't make a, a recommendation to discontinue it, but by dropping the ninety-two hundred dollars out of it, you're essentially discontinuing it, which is a good way to do it, but, yeah.
And it says in here, the chairperson shall provide all members with at least seven days prior written notice of all meetings.
So you'll notify them of our members, appointed members?
Well, they were already on there. They don't know that, you know, the term so much lapsed. I mean, that's not really on them. Do you know what I mean? As far as they knew, they were all still active members.
Yeah.
I mean, they still weren't notifying us. You know, and at some point, you know, wouldn't they at least reach out to the town to say, hey, you know, you gotta send somebody?
You oughta let them know that we've appointed three members to their committee.
Oh, they, they know we got them.
I've been communicating with them.
Okay.
What we need out of them is some sort of schedule, when they're gonna have their next meeting.
That's right.
Oh, yeah. I'm working on it. They, they know we're not happy with the fact that they put a budget and a capital improvement together without our input.
Yeah, they just threw some numbers together and, you know.
Somebody, so. We're working on it.
All right. Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this certificate of appointment, title thirty A M R S A two six oh two to Bevin Corman, Corbin. The selectman of the municipality of Acton, due in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as regular planning board member within and for the municipality of Acton until six thirty twenty-four. Given under our hand this twentieth day of April, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, I'll send this one down. I'm gonna make a motion that we accept these two certificates of appointment, title thirty A M R S A two six oh two to Lee Robitore and Adele Skritchfield. The selectman of the municipality of Acton, due in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as Moussum Watershed Dam Coalition member within and for the municipality of Acton until six thirty twenty-four. Given under our hand this twentieth day of April, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
This one back.
Yep.
Go, Jim.
Uh, executive session.
Public comment first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do public comment before we go to executive session.
Yeah, yeah, good, good.
So we have an executive session tonight. So what we'll do is we'll go to public comment first. So do we have any public comment? You coming, Ray? I see you. Okay.
Ready to jump out of his chair.
All right, open. Uh, I liked the discussion that you had, um, about recusing of oneself on different committees. I would love to see more public participation. It has been a true eye-opening experience for me, being my first time in any one of the committees.
Really? That's the first time you've been on the committee before?
On any of these committees. I was on the APAT when it first got started.
Okay, yep.
A truly eye-opening experience as far as how my tax money is being spent. So I recommend it highly to everyone to be able to volunteer. Unfortunately, as history has it, there's not that many people that do volunteer. So from that aspect of it, even by your example, David, today, that you recused yourself from voting on something, I would suggest that other committees have that same under their rules of operation. That if there is no other public personnel that are willing to be involved in all these committees, then people are in multiple committees. I think it only fair that that be in the operation of each committee, that they recuse themselves if they are in multiple committees. But only for articles that pertain to whatever other committee they are on. Other than that, they have voice and everything else. And even I believe it was said that even though the only thing that they were asked to be recused of was the voting side of it, not necessarily on.
Discussion.
Any verbiage, verbiage for recommendations that they had.
Mm-hmm.
So it was made available for them to stress their opinion, influence other members of that board, their knowledge and whatnot. But I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Anybody else?
I don't see anybody else. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session four oh five dash six A one, personnel matter.
Second.
All in favor?
I make a motion that we come out of executive session four oh five dash six A one, personnel matters.
Second.
All in favor?
So, Sir Chair, as we were coming out of the hallway, Kim was reminding us that she's on vacation for the next week. So we were just talking about what she may, may or may not, you know, be available for her to sign. I said to her, I don't see why we wouldn't put the warrant off a week so that all three of your signatures could be on there. And then we started talking about the fact that there was an election next week. So Tuesday, there's an election. Uh, the polls will be open for twelve hours, hand count. So we were talking about what is on the agenda next week. They sometimes, not always, sometimes they cancel slugman meetings after the elections.
Cause they're here real late.
Next day because it's, it's a long week. Not necessarily for you guys, but for me.
Do we have any business? Has to be kind of.
Well, so we just talked about it. So we have the policies that we, those can wait a week. We have the warrant.
She's gonna be gone anyways and she, and we'd really like to have her run the side of the warrant.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we got the warrant done.
Anything that's critical that could be done? The warrants are ten, did you?
No, I mean, we'll, I mean, everything else you've given clear direction on that we need to work on, flat ground road and.
I think we'll be all set for.
No hiring issues that need to be.
No, I'm gonna meet, no.
We can wait for the following week?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I don't know. Do we wanna wait on that?
I, that's, there was one that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let, I guess let's not. Let's, let's have a meeting. We'll keep it a short agenda and maybe get through those two.
Are you talking about the, uh?
Well, even both of them possibly.
Yeah.
So, all right. You're right, Tom.
Do we want just an executive session for next week?
I will do my best to keep it light and won't, assuming nothing else comes up.
If we can just do executive session?
Yes, sir.
So everyone knows and choose to come and up.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I mean, I, I, I think we could have gone another week. Yeah, we all, we all.
It's all good. Well, no, we should try to get those people in the place if we can, especially. Um, baseball, if we can fill that, it's gonna make.
Yeah, that's true.
It don't matter. We, we.
Well, we'll do that. We'll keep an extremely light agenda, possibly only an executive session. We'll try to table everything else.
Good. Awesome. Okay.
All right.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?